Good evening. Welcome to the October 14, 2021 regular monthly meeting of the Portsmouth City School Board. I ask that we please stand at this time for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance by Mr. Claude Parent. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May be seated. We'll now have our mission statement read by Mr. Parent.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The mission of the Portsmouth Public School Division is to engage all students in learning that will foster academic excellence and responsible citizenship.
Thanks so much. Agenda item 4.5, attendance, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Here.
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 Here. Thank you so much, agenda item 4.6, consideration of the agenda for October 14, 2021. I entertain a motion at this time.
Move for approval. Second?
Motion made by Ms. Williams, second by Ms. Hines. Any discussion? Seeing none, a roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Listen.
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Patillo?
Yes.
It's unanimous?
Thank you so much. Before we move into our agenda items for public comment, I just want to verify that we do have speakers tonight. Do we have any speakers tonight?
We have them on the agenda.
No, but I didn't let any show up. Thank you.
Seeing those speakers, we'll move to agenda item 6.1, our student representative report by our student representative, Mr. Janari Davis.
Good evening, Chair. Dr. Patillo, Vice Chair Atkinson, board members and all those assembled here tonight. I am excited to give my second school board report tonight. I want to start off this evening by thanking Dr. Bracy and his staff for the extra safety precautions that they have implemented in our high schools. I've heard students' opinions over the past weeks regarding this safety protocol. At Norcom, the students state that they feel safer in knowing that weapons or anything not safe cannot make it inside the building. I recently recorded my first episode of Portsmouth's finest. The full video can be viewed on the Division's webpage. I'll be starting my school journey, my school tour journey, soon where I will make my first official visits as student representative to each school. I have attended many athletic events in the past few weeks, starting off with Churchland High School. I attended the varsity football game on September 24th where the Truckers dominated the Norview Pilots. On October 1st, I attended the Churchland Varsity Football Game where the Truckers defeated Grafton High School 66 to 14. I would like to recognize Jonathan McEwen, who placed second in the VHSL for a golf tournament. Jonathan will be advanced to states representing the Churchland Truckers. Now with Manor High School, I attended the Manor versus Churchland Junior Varsity and Varsity Football Games held in newly renovated Manor Fieldhouse. It was great to see both Portsmouth schools competing at once. On September 30th, I attended the Manor Junior Varsity Football Game where they played against the Norview Pilots. This past Friday, I was able to attend the Manor's first homecoming where the Varsity Football Team took on the Grammy Pilots. I would also like to shout out the Manor Homecoming Queen Akaya Booth. Last but not least, I see Norcom High School where the sun shines bright. On September 27th, I traveled and competed at the VHSL 3A Golf Tournament in Petersburg along with three of my teammates and my coach. Wednesday of last week, I traveled to Kingswood County with the I.C. Norcom Junior Varsity Football Team where they defeated the Kingswood County Cavaliers 20 to 18, having to go into overtime. I want to say congratulations to the I.C. Norcom Competition Cheer Team led by Coach Karen Britt and Coach Kelly Marin. They placed third at the VHSL Eastern District Competition, which was held, which was held this past Saturday at Churchland High School. They were the only Portsmouth school to participate. The competition team has advanced to regionals and will be traveling to New Kent this Saturday to compete against the other schools in 3A. I look forward to continuing to support our students, not just academically, but athletically. Thank you, board members, for giving me the opportunity to serve and support our students in this great capacity. As always, keep shining brighter together.
Thank you so much, sir. Board members, do you have any questions or comments for Janari at this time? Ms. Thomas?
Janari, well done as always. And I also want to say, I've been following the social media page that you have as a Portsmouth Student Rep. I just encourage everyone to follow that page. Thank you for all the updates and the pictures and it's always a good positive place to see what's happening around all of our schools. So thank you so much for all the work you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, sir.
No problem.
Agenda item 7.1, and for 7.2, we're going to ask that if our communications director, Lauren Nalasco, can come up now and read our resolutions for us that we have on tonight.
Would you like me to do both together or one at a time for both?
One at a time.
Perfect. We'll do. First off, for American Education Week, whereas as advocates for children, we work to provide opportunities for them to acquire the tools, skills, and knowledge required for success in life, and whereas the Portsmouth City School Board is desirous of maintaining our schools' roles as places of discovery and innovation, and this board is committed to ensuring that our graduates have marketable skills, and whereas the professional faculty has a duty to provide a complete and competitive education for all students, and whereas by Presidential Proclamation 5403, our nation will pause once again for the annual observance of American Education Week, November 15 through the 19th, 2021. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Portsmouth City School Board reaffirm its commitment to public education and recognize that everyone shares in the responsibility for providing a high-quality education for our children, and be it further resolved that the Portsmouth local government and citizens be called upon to continue their support of a quality education for every student, and be it finally resolved that this resolution be archived as part of the Portsmouth School Board's official records.
Thank you so much.
Move for approval.
Second?
Motion being made by Ms. Hines and second by Mr. Parent. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, a roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Resoundingly, yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Patillo?
Yes.
It's unanimous?
Thank you so much. Agenda item 7.2 will be consideration of a vaccination resolution, and I ask Ms. Nalasco, she'll lead us in that at this time.
A resolution of the School Board for the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, requiring all students participating in high school and middle school athletics and extracurricular activities to receive a COVID-19 vaccination or be subject to weekly testing. Whereas on August 8th, 2021, the American Academy of Pediatrics issued COVID-19 interim guidance, return to sports and physical activity for children who are participating in and/or returning to physical activity, inclusive of but not limited to organized sports within school. And whereas, a considerable number of students enrolled in Portsmouth Public Schools at the middle and high school level participate in athletics and extracurricular activities. And whereas, there are both physical and psychological health benefits for students who participate in athletics and extracurricular activities by improving their cardiovascular health, strength, body composition, overall fitness, and mentally they benefit from increased socialization with friends, all of which support their developmental growth. And whereas, data suggests that adolescents may spread SARS-CoV-2 as efficiently as adults. And whereas, because prolonged close contact with a person infected with SARS-CoV-2 is the main driver of transmission, student participation in athletics and extracurricular activities influences the risk of infection. SARS-CoV-2 transmission among athletes has been documented in the sport setting, with indoor sports likely bearing the greatest risk. And whereas, according to the Portsmouth Health Department, most transmission associated with outdoor sports has been related to off-field activities such as sharing meals and during transportation in private vehicles where people are unmasked or partially masked, SARS-CoV-2 infection rates for outdoor sports are likely to reflect community infection rates. And whereas, for the week beginning October 3rd, 2021 to October 9th, 2021, the SARS-CoV-2 transmission level in the city of Portsmouth was high transmission with a PCR percent positivity of 13.3% and averaging 43 new cases per 100,000 people in the last seven days. And whereas, Portsmouth Public Schools and the Portsmouth City School Board wants to ensure to the greatest extent possible the health and safety of students enrolled in Portsmouth Public Schools who are participating in athletics and extracurricular activities. And whereas, School Board Policy JFC provides that the School Board is responsible for protecting the health, safety, and welfare of its students. And whereas, School Board Policy JHCC provides that the School Board recognizes the importance of protecting students from the transmission of communicable diseases. And whereas, screening testing is intended to identify persons who are infected without symptoms or before development of symptoms who may be contagious so that measures can be taken to prevent further transmission. And whereas, because many children with COVID-19 are asymptomatic, their infections may be difficult to detect without regular testing. And whereas, the School Board encourages every student eligible to receive the COVID-19 vaccine to be fully vaccinated as defined by the Center for Disease Control in order to prevent the transmission of SARS-CoV-2. Now therefore, be it resolved that every middle or high school student enrolled in Portsmouth Public Schools, participating in athletics or extracurricular activities, and all coaches and sponsors in order to mitigate the transmission of SARS-CoV-2 are required to receive a COVID-19 vaccine and be fully vaccinated by December 6th, 2021, or submit to weekly testing for SARS-CoV-2. Portsmouth Public Schools will offer a list of vaccination clinics for those who choose to be vaccinated, and be it further resolved that through the adoption of this resolution, the Board has met communicative responsibilities outlined in School Board Policies K.A., Goals for School-Community Relations, and K.B., Public School Information Program.
Thank you so much. I will entertain a motion at this time for the vaccination resolution, 7.2.
Move for approval.
Second?
Motion's made by Ms. Williams, second by Ms. Thomas. Any discussion? I'll start with Ms. Hines and work our way back down.
Thank you, Chair. My question is going to be, if students choose not to get vaccinated, are we going to refuse them access to the extracurriculars?
No, it requires for weekly testing if you choose not to be vaccinated.
And that weekly testing is done at whose expense?
We have a grant, a VISA grant that's provided by the state that will cover that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks so much, Mr. Parent.
Ms. Hines has asked the questions because our submit, and I wanted to know who was going to pay for that. And the other thing, it's important when you say fully vaccinated, there may be parents that may not want their students to be vaccinated. So parental involvement is going to be very important, but I think that by December the 6th, when you have our submit to weekly testing and they're not going to have to pay for it, I think that's very reasonable. Thank you.
Yes, it'll be paid for by the Division through our VISA grant, but we're also working with the Health Department to establish clinics on site in some of our facilities as well.
And there may be some parents that for religious reasons may not want their child to be vaccinated.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. Vice Chair Atkinson.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to, before our fellow board members asked the questions, I was going to say to parents who the Board did discuss that we would pay for those who are going to do the weekly testing versus being vaccinated. We did discuss that, and we did agree upon that in the event the families did not want to vaccinate their children or any coaches or sponsors as well. So that was something we did agree on. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Thomas?
Yes, thank you, Chair. So yeah, just to clarify, for extracurricular activities, does that include just after-school clubs as well, or can we get some clarification on that?
I'll let Dr. Bracy answer that.
Thank you.
Yes, that's, extracurricula includes all athletic competitions through VHSL, any clubs and activities, band, the ROTC programs that participate in, because they participate in activities outside of the school day, so those sponsors will be subject to that as well. Clubs that will come together after school will also be a part of this process.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Any more discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
No.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Patillo?
Yes.
Seven yes votes, one no, it passes.
Thank you so much. Agenda 8, consent agenda items 8.1 through 8.5, those are all loaded in your board docs. Now entertain a motion at this time.
Move for approval.
Second?
Motion made by Ms. Hines, second by Mr. Parent. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Patillo?
Yes.
It's unanimous?
Thank you so much. Agenda item 9.1, monthly report for curriculum instruction, Dr. Wen.
Dr. Patillo, Vice Chair Atkinson, members of the Board, happy fall. It's always a pleasure to come before you and share the curriculum instruction updates with you. You have the hard copy in your board docs, and then tonight we have a very special presentation from our Office of Special Education and our students there. And at this time, I'll call Mrs. Pamela Battle-Hearty to share that with you.
Thank you, Dr. Wen. Good evening, Chairman Patillo, Vice Chair Atkinson, Dr. Bracy, and School Board members. I stand before you tonight with excitement to announce October is Disability History and Awareness Month. Yvonne Pierre once said, "When you focus on someone's disability, you overlook their abilities, their beauty, and their uniqueness. Once you learn to accept and love them for who they are, you subconsciously learn to love yourself unconditionally." Our teachers and staff here in Portsmouth, we love our students and our families. In honor of recognizing Disability History and Awareness Month, I would like to share a video clip highlighting two students from Churchland High School under the leadership of Mr. Malachi Principal, Assistant Principal Mrs. Burton, Special Education Teachers Mrs. Sebastian, Mrs. Center, and Program Specialist Terry Lau.
with disabilities, have control in their lives and help to set and steer the course rather than remaining the silent passenger. The students used the I'm Determined One pager to tell their teacher what their strengths, needs, interests, and preferences are during school. Meet Destiny. She is a senior in Miss Sebastian's classroom at Churchland High School. She has big dreams.
Would you like to get all dressed up and work in a business office? Would you like to make care of people that are sick? That's a good idea. Why you would? Yeah, that's a good idea. Like that one? Okay, he gets a space for another. Like be a part of? Would you like to work with money? Other people's money?
Meet Damari. He is a ninth grader in Miss Center's class. He knows what he needs to be successful.
Okay, you like to choose your own seat and have a comfortable seat. Good. When you're at home, do you need to go outside? Do you need homework? Do you need time to just relax and like watch TV? Do you need really good food, sleep? Or do you need a structured morning? You need time to relax? I love it. That's awesome. And when you, who are the best people that can help you? Is it your family, coaches, your best friends, maybe a new friend, a teacher, or maybe your aunts and uncles and cousins? Your teacher? Okay, great. So you need to make sure you have your seat, that you have some relaxation time, and you need your teacher to help you sometimes. So this?
So what do you like about Churchland High School?
All right, so what's your name? Offo. And what do you like about Churchland High School? Well, I like to make new friends. Nice.
What do you want to be when you grow up?
Ready? All right, Destiny, what's your name?
Destiny LaShay Shepherd.
And what's your favorite part about Churchland High School?
I like to sing the automata, and I like to race with Mr. Malachi and Coach, and Coach, um, Coach Cuthbert.
Awesome. Anything else you love about this school?
And I like to learn with everybody.
Awesome. What do you want to be when you grow up?
A principal like Mr. Malachi.
Churchland High School and I'mDetermined.org has taught the students to speak up, communicate, and advocate for themselves. Churchland High School Special Programs, shining brighter together.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I will say that that was one of the highlights of my week. I really appreciate that. Thank you so much. Do we have any questions or comments for the curriculum instruction report? Thank you so much. Agenda item 9.2, VSB-A Academy Awards, Dr. Bracy.
Good evening, everyone. This is the time where I will share the information that was presented to the select school board members for their participation in staff development for the Virginia School Board Association. So we have five members that are being recognized for the time that they spent with professional development, and each of the certificates are different. You have different levels of participation that you have done. So presented with awards tonight will be Ms. Lakeisha Atkinson, Award of Recognition; Ms. Sarah Duncan-Hines, Award of Recognition; Mr. Claude Parent, Award of Achievement; Dr. Carrio Patillo, Award of Achievement; Mrs. Tamara Schumate, Award of Recognition. And just to let you know what the awards say, it says Virginia School Boards Association, this award is presented to said board member for your commitment to effective school board governance through your participation in the VSB-A Board Academy 2019 through 2021. So at this time, I will pass out those, these are certificates at this time.
Thank you, sir.
Our next agenda item shows for special recognition, and this is something I really want to do since the start of the pandemic, but I did not have an opportunity to. And it really was on my heart to make sure I made this happen, is to show our appreciation. So I want to ask Mr. Parent if he will come forward. Mr. Parent served the School Board as a fearless chair, and he continues to guide me, and I call him often, for this role that I currently hold, and I just want to give a special commendation, citation, present to Claude C. Parent, in special recognition of his dedicated service to Portsmouth Public Schools demonstrated by his leadership as Vice Chair of the Portsmouth City School Board July 1, 2015, through December 31, 2015, and as Chairman, January 14, 2016, through December 30, 2020. And this has all the members of the School Board here mentioned, and Dr. Bracy Superintendent presented on Thursday, October 14, 2021. Thank you, sir.
This was a surprise, and I want to thank all of you for this, and it was my, it's been my pleasure to serve as your Chair and part of this school board, starting in 2010, and it's been a long time. So thank you very much, and thank you for this honor. Appreciate it.
And I want to make sure I did this properly. We did it through Zoom, but I would ask Ms. Costella-Williams if she would come forward at this time as well. She thought she would retire on us last year, but we had her come back again to help us out and fill the void for us, but we didn't get a chance to thank her in person, so I want to make sure I did it now, not only for being a faithful and committed school board member, but also in special recognition of her dedicated service to Portsmouth Public Schools as a board member and demonstrated by her leadership as Vice Chair of the Portsmouth City School Board from January 14, 2016, to December 31, 2018. And as all the members of the School Board listed here, and Dr. Bracy, our Superintendent, presented on Thursday, October 14, 2021.
Thank you, thank you, School Board members. I think this is my second time retiring in less than a year, so maybe you may see me again in 2022. Thank you, thank you.
And on a couple of weeks ago, board members, I received an email from a Mr. C. Fred Bateman, who's the Executive Director of the Urban Superintendents Association, and I wanted to read this, he had no idea I was going to read it on tonight, but it says, "Dear Mr. Patillo, The Urban Superintendents Association of America is a professional association of more than 150 public school superintendents who serve mid-sized urban districts such as Portsmouth and the United States and Canada. This association provides opportunities to learn from experts and to share solutions to issues they each face. Your Superintendent, Dr. Eli Bracy, is an active member of the association. In fact, for the past six years, Dr. Bracy has served as one of the eight regional vice presidents of USA. Today, I am pleased to tell you that he has just been elected President-elect of USA effective January 1, 2022, and then to become president on January 1, 2023." it further reads, "As you know, to be respected by your peers is the highest form of professional recognition. Dr. Bracy is nationally respected. Indeed, the members of the nominated committee who put in his name on the ballot are from Texas, Virginia, Washington, and Nebraska. We hope that you will share this information with your colleagues on the Board. You have every reason to be proud. Sincerely, C. Fred Bateman, Executive Director, Urban Superintendents Association of America." Congratulations, sir.
Congratulations.
And at this time, do you have anything to say, sir?
When you ask me that, that means you're telling me to say something. But I appreciate the honor of being selected by my peers to be president-elect of USA. I've learned a lot from being a part of that group, and I am elated by the election to be president-elect and then president in a couple of years. I look forward to that, and I will serve them well and represent our school division very well. Thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you so much, sir. Now, agenda item 9.4, which is probably the highlight of my night, which will be done by Ms. Jessica Dorn. That would be retiree recognition. I'm going to ask Ms. Dorn to come forward now, and if she could lead us in this moment.
Good evening, Chair Dr. Patillo, Vice Chair Atkinson, school board members, and distinguished guests. Tonight, we're in for a special treat because we have joining us a group of retirees who were not able to attend the celebration that we normally have in June. And so they are here tonight to be recognized by you and by us for all of their hard work and dedication that they have given to Portsmouth Public Schools. To the retirees, we thank you and appreciate you, and we are going to ask that when we call your name, you come forward to receive your award from Dr. Bracy and Dr. Patillo.
Can we also say that if there's anybody in the audience that would like to take pictures, that they are more than welcome to come up to the front to get those pictures as well, so that they don't have to go across?
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure. Did everybody hear that? Okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, we'll ask that the first row please stand. Please come forward and receive your award. Arlene Matta. Ms. Matta has 14 years with Portsmouth Public Schools. Gail Morton. Ms. Morton had 20 years with Portsmouth Public Schools. Verleen Drake. Ms. Drake had 25 years with Portsmouth Public Schools. Kathleen Gold. Ms. Gold had 27 years with Portsmouth Public Schools. Take your time. Take your time. Constance Westmoreland. Ms. Westmoreland also had 27 years. That's right. Linda Francis. Ms. Francis had 29 years with Portsmouth Public Schools. Wanda Jones. Ms. Jones had 30 years with Portsmouth Public Schools. Sheila Jose. Ms. Jose also has 30 years. Josie. Julie Lawrence. Ms. Lawrence had 33 years. Jennifer Goodman Hayes. Ms. Goodman Hayes had 34 years with Portsmouth Public Schools. And finally, Anthony Wright. Mr. Wright had 45 years with Portsmouth Public Schools. Congratulations.
We definitely want to thank all of our retirees again for your service and dedication to Portsmouth Public Schools, and I'm honored to be a part of this moment on tonight. Thank you again. At this time, agenda item 10.1, Monthly Report from our Superintendent, Dr. Eli Bracy III.
Good evening again, Chairman Patillo, Vice Chair Atkinson, and members of the board. We're in the middle of an exciting month, so let me jump right into some of the highlights of our school division for the work in October. First, as you can see from all our shirts tonight, we're honoring October as National Bullying Prevention Month. I want to applaud our Office of Youth Risk Prevention for its planning of all these great activities for our entire division, including October 4th Blue Up Day to show our division's stance against bullying. If you missed Blue Up Day, don't worry. There's Orange Day up next Wednesday, October 20, where you can wear your best orange and post pictures on social media as well using the hashtag #PPSUnityDay. As the board knows, the week of October 18 through the 22nd is National Transportation Safety Week. I would encourage all of our students, families, and staff members to take a moment during the week to show their support to our Office of Transportation Services for all they do for our community. We can all realize the vital job that our bus drivers do, crossing guards and bus monitors that they perform on a daily basis to get students to and from schools safely and efficiently. To our transportation team, let me publicly share here and now that we thank you and appreciate all that you do. This time of year is always very special because it is when we take part in our annual United Way Giving Campaign. Schools and administrative offices across the city kicked off their campaigns this past Monday, and I would like to remind all staff members and families that all donations go directly into our Portsmouth community, where issues such as food insecurity, mental health resources are addressed with the funds we raise. Our campaign will conclude right at the end of the month, on Friday, October 29. I hope everyone at home will join me in supporting the United Way in some way this year because every penny really does make a difference. Finally, I do have one small housekeeping reminder. Our Federal Impact Aid Cards. Cards will be going home to schools on Monday, October 18. Families, please help us get those cards back to your child's school, signed and completely filled in by Friday, October 22. As you know, these cards help the school division receive federal funding for students who are connected to military families and/or live in military or government-related housing and for whose families work for federal agencies. And Chairman Patillo, before I conclude my report, I definitely have to say to Mrs. Costella Williams, who is, this is actually her last meeting. I want Mrs. Williams to know that from, you know, the first day I arrived, February 16, 2015, she has been a staunch supporter in initiatives that I wanted to introduce to the school division. She was one of the few board members that are remaining that were here that actually hired me. So I do want you to know that you will be truly missed. And if you don't think anybody else will miss you, do know that I will definitely miss you. But the phone calls that we do after 11 or sometime at midnight, those can still continue on. All right. You're still part of the family. So thank you so much, and I appreciate all that you and your family have done for me in my tenure here in the division. Thank you, Chairman Patillo. That concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Before we open up, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Williams.
You know, I cannot allow that nice comment to go without saying, "Thank you, Dr. Bracy. It has been my pleasure to serve with you. I think you're one of the best superintendents in the country. Not only are you compassionate with the staff, you work hard to try to please everyone. But I do know that that quiet, gentle side, that there is a firm Dr. Bracy that knows when he's had enough, and he's had enough. But he does listen to everyone, and he tries to accommodate everybody. So we are blessed to have him in Portsmouth, and it has been my pleasure to serve on this board with all the board members, with the staff, as well as our leader in charge, Dr. Eli Bracy III. Thank you for all that you do."
Thank you so much. Before we open up for board comments, I'd like to thank everyone again for your diligence and for your presence on tonight. We've had some pretty tough issues the last few weeks to tackle, so thank you all for continuing to work hard and serve the community. I would also like the public to be aware and be on the lookout for a special call meeting of the board, work session potentially next week, to discuss some concerns we have to address some issues with staff. So please be on the lookout for that from our board clerk within the next day. And I now open up for board comments. Ms. Williams and Dr. Whitaker.
Thank you, Chairman Patillo. I just wanted to follow up, and I know that Sheriff Michael Moore presented an assessment on safety to the superintendent. And I might not be here, but I would like to know, maybe in the next board meeting, what is the status? And if Dr. Bracy could share something with us about that.
Yes, Mrs. Williams. As I mentioned, I think at the last meeting, that I received then a report from Sheriff Moore with recommendations for us to consider for safety in our school division. So my team and I have started going through those, and the recommendations that he has presented to us are very sound and necessary and needed. And just to give you an example of a couple of the things that were recommended that we also agree with is, one of the things was looking at an SRO in every school, which we know that that's something that's needed. Dr. Patillo and I will be meeting next week with the city manager and the mayor. So I'm sure budget will be part of the meeting. So these are some of the things that we will share, is some of the recommendations that came from this report. And also, just one other piece I think that's worth mentioning is that the sheriff had mentioned we need to upgrade our screening system as far as students coming into the, into our buildings, which goes right in with what we have already been discussing. You know, I've asked Mr. Slaffer to looking to the latest technology that we can use to get students in, screened, and efficiently get them in and out of the building. So those are just some of the highlights of what he had shared. We'll be following up in detail as we go through each one. But with all of these recommendations, there's a monetary value that comes with it, and that's something that we're going to have to have support from council for. Because even though everybody thinks we have this big windfall of money through all of the grants, these, a lot of these initiatives, we can look at, but it's going to be some recurring cost when you start talking about SROs in the buildings, you know, because the grant funds will run out. So this is something that's going to have to be sustained afterwards. So we'll meet next week and start having some dialogue with it in along with our representatives as well from council and school board.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes, I appreciate the board passing the resolution for the vaccination of athletes and students in extracurricular activities. But I'd like to, for us to have some discussion on whether we can extend that to the student body as a whole. Because Portsmouth has a high transmission rate. Right now, it's been pretty steady. And to protect both the health of our students and our staff, parents, grandparents, et cetera, I think that's something we need to look into. So if we can have a discussion about that at our next meeting, that'd appreciate it.
Okay. And Dr. Whitaker, when we establish with the Health Department days that they will come into the schools for the clinics, it will be open for any student that's eligible for their age to receive the vaccines? Yes?
But I'm wondering, you know, some school boards have, across the country, have made it a requirement for attendance. So I'm wondering, is that something that we could also look into doing? Or at least discuss it to see how that would work?
Okay. We were looking to see how that relates to the Vista Grant that we received. Because through the grant, they also share with us who our vendor is. So then from there, we'll be able to see how much they can, how much of a load that they can do. Because I know we initially talked about our extracurricular activities, but we'll definitely, we can definitely look into it and report back to you.
And as far as the mandate is concerned, and Dr. Bracy, you just talked with Mr. Carroll at reference of those possibilities and legalities, and that we can possibly make it a discussion item at that time. Ms. Thomas, and then Vice Chair Atkinson, and then Ms. Hayes.
Thank you, Chair. I was thinking about our presentation that the epidemiologist presented to us last work session last week, and also that was shared to the schools today for the public to see. And one thing that came across my mind when she talked about the positivity rate, which Dr. Whitaker just brought up, is do we still have, or did we ever implement the COVID kind of task force teams in each school to streamline communication from the schools to the top? I know we talked about it when we're doing our reopening plan April this year, when we reopened April, talking about having kind of a representation at each school that could alert downtown, basically, when certain things were needed. And I wonder if we didn't implement that, can we have a discussion about putting something like that back in place for our next meeting as we still try to manage through the high positivity rate here?
Sure. We can definitely take a look at that. If we're talking about resources that are available, auxiliary services already has a process in place where the administrators or lead custodians can notify them with whatever needs that they may have as far as equipment, whether it's masking or the sanitizer stations that are in the buildings. And we also still have our pandemic committee that's meeting, we have a representation of the different levels, elementary, middle, and high school, and some other departments that are part of that as well, that help when they meet. Dr. Simmons, how often do you all meet? Monthly, which is a monthly meeting as well. So if there's anything, and you can just share with me.
Yeah, I'll clarify.
Just share with me whatever it is, and we'll make sure that that's covered.
Yeah, I'm thinking more of a mixture of the teacher representative, maybe an administrator representative, the maintenance custodian staff, nursing staff. representative, the maintenance custodian staff, nursing staff, that all collaborate on the procedures, or maybe things that are working, not working at that particular school, to kind of flow up to the top so we can have a more holistic kind of plan for as we continue to deal with the pandemic.
Okay, yeah, we can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Atkinson.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to thank all the retirees that are still here and those that are left. Thank you for your years of service. We appreciate you, and I know some way or somewhere down the lines of your service that you changed the life of a youth, so thank you again. I want to also thank the Board for continuing our mission of being bully-free and continuing with that message from a previous student rep that brought about. So we have on our shirts today, and PPS will continue to be bully-free. Also, if there are any survivors, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. We stand as solidarity with you. I know some schools have been wearing pink for breast cancer, so I think the schools who have celebrated that as well to recognize that. And lastly, to Board Member Costella Williams, I just want to thank you for passing the torch, being a great leader to follow. I don't know if I can fill those shoes. I wouldn't want to fill your shoes. Those are big shoes to fill, but I just thank you for passing the torch and being a mentor and putting it into women like me to believe that one day you could be a School Board member and a Vice Chair of a School Board. So thank you for that. I appreciate you. Thank you.
Heinz.
Thank you, Chair. Kathy and I are sharing a microphone, so I'm sorry if I miss. So this week, I got the phone call that my child was home for quarantine. What I found missing in the information that was given to me as a parent was the last date of contact with the person that tested positive. So my question to those that make up the scripts that each school has to use for those phone calls is if we can include the last date of contact, because then you start doing the math and you start counting when we're out of the percolation or the, whatever, I call it the percolation, but to make sure that we stay symptom-free for those certain amount of days. Because I got that information when the Health Department came and contact traced me. I didn't necessarily get it from the school. So I'm just curious as if we can make sure that that last date of contact with that positive person can be in the information that goes home to the parents and to the students for that information, just so the parents have that. That also led me to think about during the summer and when we were open in the spring, we had a deep cleaning team that went through the buildings to do the air sanitation, you know, the magic wand that we would call it. Is that still being done, especially now that we are at full staff? I know teachers are doing their best to keep their rooms clean as best that they can, but do they have that support of a team coming in? I know it can't be every day. I would like for it to be every day, but at least do they have the extra support of that deep cleaning that are coming in as well to back them up with that support? And knowing that just today, as I was coming into the building for our 5:30 start time for dinner, I had a phone call from my son's school saying that they still had a bus, that the bus had just loaded and left at 5:30. So understanding that the struggles and the issues that we still have with transportation, where are we with thinking about adjusting bus schedules to, or even if it's not bus schedules, but do we need to relook at what time we're opening buildings to give more flexibility and to give more support to our transportation staff so that our kids, as we get into inclement weather time with winter and with the rainy season that usually comes in January through March, so that, you know, we don't have kids standing at bus stops and waiting and all that good, but I'm just thinking of different things that we can do to help alleviate some of the pressures that are on our transportation staff as well, especially when it comes to scheduling. Thank you.
Okay. Three, no, I got it. First thing was about the script.
Yes.
Okay. That comes directly from the Health Department. They provide that and they put that together for us. So we're following the script that they give us. As far as the number of days, they are doing the contact tracing. We notify them. They let us know, or they let the families know, and then they also find out who they were with as part of their contact tracing. So the script that we have is what was given to us by them that we're to share. So now, if that's to be modified, we need to find out from them, but just to know where that came from. We're following the guidance from the Health Department as it pertains to anything COVID-related. We don't create none of this, so that comes from the Health Department. The DDT teams, that's still daily. As a matter of fact, I had a question about that myself, not from anyone else. So Dr. Simmons and I talked this morning, because even in our office, they're still coming. I think that if somebody is wondering whether or not they're doing it, I think what the issue is, is that maybe they're not putting the signage up to show that they've been in those buildings or been in those classrooms. So he and I talked this morning, so that's something that we're going to make sure that they continue to do. They're still coming around. At the school level now, you have the custodians that are actually doing the DDT or the deep cleaning. So they're taking care of the schools, because now as you mentioned, that we're back in full steam, the teams that we have can't do all of that. So we have part-time staff, part-time crew that actually take care of all of the school buses. They do the deep cleaning on those, and they do some of the standalone buildings that are not schools, like our third floor, Emily Spong, Clark. So they are doing that daily. That is something that's still occurring, so not to be worried. That is taking place, and Dr. Simmons confirmed that with me today. And as far as transportation, we are looking at consolidating, maybe, we're looking at all avenues. We're looking at if we can see if we can condense some of the routes, which is a possibility. I know we have some buses that are running that don't have many students up there, so we're looking at that as an option. We're also trying to find bus drivers. We're still recruiting bus drivers as well. So we're looking at all of that. You know, I don't think we're at the point yet where we're looking at changing or altering the schedules. We'll look at that. As a result, I think Simonsdale, I think we had, I remember a call that may have come in from Simonsdale about a late bus. So one of the things that I know Ms. King, the principal, was doing, she was dealing with calls as they came in from parents to let them know, hey, here's where the bus is. So rather than stopping and doing an all-call, she was trying to address and field the calls, she and her administration of the calls that were coming in. So what we shared with her is, look, let it ring, just get the message out, letting parents know that, hey, bus 204 is running late, and if we don't know the exact time, but with the edilogue, the parents themselves can download the app, and they can know exactly where the bus is, so that if they see the bus is not en route, they'll be able to track it, just like with Uber or Lyft, they'll be able to see exactly where it is. So, you know, we are addressing that. So if buses are late, and they're going to be, because as you mentioned, we're not fully staffed, you know, we're trying to get the message out to them to make them aware of it. All right.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much again, again to Ms. Williams. Our sincere gratitude and appreciation for your service, and I'm sure you're still going to be heavily involved and make sure we stay on top of things around here. And to all of our retirees, thank you again for your service, and just like Ms. Williams, you can always come back if you choose to. But thank you all again, and I intend to motion to adjourn, Ms. Heinz.
Adjourn.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you so much. Have a great night.
Good night.